Hi, it's Terry Roberts back with our series of community conversations about the COVID-19 pandemic and we're delighted to welcome back Supervisor Greg Hart, the public face of Santa Barbara County's response. Supervisor, thanks so much for taking the time. I know you're really jammed.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's always a pleasure to chat.
We spoke exactly a month ago and at that time you said, you know, we had just flattened the curve, but we were not near having enough testing and you were pretty candid. You said you weren't sure when we would. Do we now have enough testing capacity? I know we've added a number of stations.
We're getting there and the increase has been significant at the state level. I think when we talked maybe three weeks ago or two weeks ago, the state was doing about 12,000 tests per day and now there are over 30,000 tests per day and our county similarly has increased about that same rate. So we're doing a lot more testing and that can make a big difference. We've also ramped up the contact tracing capability here in the county and that is also ramping up. So we're getting to the place where we'll be better able to box in the virus hopefully.
All right, I want to ask you about the tracing. So as I read it, we are supposed to be doing two per 1,000, two tests per 1,000 population approximately, or about 880 a day. Are we getting close to that?
We're within hailing distance of that, yeah. I don't know exactly. I think the 600 number is what I recall most recently being told about and we have the ability now to test asymptomatic people. And so folks who want to be tested, there are slots available for people to get either in Santa Barbara or Lompoc or San Maria. So and I don't believe all of those tests are being, all those slots are being utilized. So there is an opportunity for more testing.
So a lot of progress in that, in that area.
Yes.
Now, could you just describe what the status of our tracing program is, how many tracers we have and what exactly it is they're doing?
We have county staff. We borrowed people from different departments around the county and have trained them to turn them into disease detectives. We're also working with nonprofit organizations in the community too, who also have staff that are trusted messengers within the community. It's really important because we're, you know, we're asking a lot. When somebody tests positive, we want them to quarantine immediately. In fact, when they're tested, we're asking people to quarantine themselves at that point in time because we don't want people to continue circulating under the premise that they may in fact be positive. And we'd like to get them that test back, those results back as quickly as possible so we could say either yes, you need to continue quarantine and we're going to support you with meals, you know, and financial assistance to make that more reasonable for you. And if you are not positive, then you can go about your daily tasks. The initial increase in state testing capability also unfortunately had a pretty significant lag between the point of time being tested to getting the results back. That initially was in, I think as far as five days away, which really deteriorates the ability of the quarantine process, particularly when you're asking somebody who's simply taken a test, not had a positive reading. That was, I think, a product of trying to ramp up this dramatically increased capability statewide, all at the same time. There were some glitches with the processing of the tests at the labs and that's being worked through and the system's getting better. And that's probably, you know, an overarching reality in this entire situation is that just because we have the testing capability and we flip the switch and we say, yeah, let's get this going, doesn't mean it's going to be seamless and perfect right out the gate. All of these systems involve people and bureaucracies and, and there are things that go wrong and we've had that happen at the state level and at the county level as well.
And I, as I read the, the new, the RISE guide, we have 72 tracers, which seems to exceed the number, slightly exceed the number that were required. Now they, if someone tests positive, they, just help me understand the process. So the tracers then interview this person about their contacts over X period of time and then reaches out to each of those people? Is that, if I got that right?
You have that exactly right. It's a lot of backtracking of their movements. You know, there's, there are differences in the kind of contacts. You know, we're not necessarily concerned about their shopping expedition, going to a store. That kind of contact isn't necessarily a high-risk classic situation of the disease being spread. A more significant interaction is, you know, two people being in a closed place, space without protection for 10 or 15 minutes. And so those are the kind of, the contacts that they're looking for and then they will go to those people, as you said, and have the exact same conversation with those contacts. And then from them, similarly, we'll ask that person to be tested and while that process is happening, we'll contact trace the people that they had contacts with too. So the key to the whole system is the rapidity of getting the test results because you don't want it to go five days and have the number of contacts that have to be traced become exponential. You know, when one person in one day meets five people, over five days, they meet 25 people. Those 25 people end up with 25 contacts, you know, over time and before you know it, you can't contact trace all those people. So the whole system relies on a quicker turnaround of testing.
And, and just so I'm clear, so person A tests positive, they are asked to self-quarantine, then their contacts or substantial contacts are interviewed. Are they at that point, that level of person asked to self-quarantine as well, or do they await the test result for, for that action to be taken?
I don't know precisely at this point in time. I think in the perfect system, if the results were back fast enough, they would be asked to quarantine. Since the, the lag is so long and the number of contacts that, that do happen as a result do get to be large, I'm not sure everybody in the system is being asked to quarantine. And even a step back, you know, before someone is even tested, if you, if you are tested, you are asked to quarantine right now because the presumption is you could have the virus. And obviously that's voluntary. It's up to people to decide how they're going to want to deal with that. But then when the test results come back, that is when the contact tracing begins and the call happens. And what's so critical about this, and we talked about it this, I think, last time, is that this, this all relies on collaboration and cooperation from people. We want this to be anonymous. We want this to be something that works for people. We don't want this to be oppressive and in any way felt like an imposition. It is important for people to cooperate, for this all to be successful. And as we go forward, we do more testing of more people, you know, that becomes even more important.
And to be clear, that's a big difference between, you know, the US and what happened in Wuhan, in China, or even in South Korea, where this three-step process, test, trace, and isolate, much more restrictive in, in China. In other words, if you were supposed to isolate, they put you in a isolation hotel or something like that. We're not talking about that level of restriction here, correct?
No, we're asking people to isolate themselves at home primarily. That is the vast majority. That is their choice. We do have hotel rooms that we have made available for people, particularly folks who are experiencing homelessness, that we want them to come into a, a setting that's protective of their health and safety and to keep them from being an active threat of spreading the virus out in the community. But most people who are, do have a housing situation choose to self-isolate.
All right. Let me ask you about the, the RISE guide, reopening and safe environment. This is just an 80-page document that was released yesterday. And since I have no life, I spent the morning reading it. And you know, it's just, I really would urge anybody who's watching, who is, you know, really focused on this, to read it. It really speaks to the complexity of what is trying to be, to be managed. I mean, not only do you have these multiple layers of, of guidelines and advice from the feds and from the state and from Resolve to save our lives, which is more global data and from San Luis Obispo County, but it really attempts to account for almost everything in our economy. I mean, it weighs in on, on how you take holy communion, whether you can have a Zumba class, where you can play pickleball and whether you can have a lip and nose piercing. I mean, it's just extraordinary. And particularly in, you know, a word you use a lot, uncertainty, and this atmosphere of uncertainty, attempting to account for all these is just a huge challenge. So anyway, what is the purpose of this guide? Is it so we're ready to go when the governor says you can go to the next stage? Or is it something that we are required to file with state government? Exactly what is it?
Well, and it changed and that's why it is not clear. Initially, what we were doing was anticipating the moment in time when the governor would hand off the decision-making to our county to reopen businesses on some sort of irrational science and medically-based system. And so we wanted to be ahead of that and we convened the stakeholder group and these medical professionals to create a document that would be a standalone guide for our county to begin the phased reopening of businesses. And that was based on the direct comments from the governor, that that was what he was going to propose to do. The counties would have a substantial and meaningful role to play in this process. As time went on and circumstances changed in this uncertain moment, and you're exactly right, I do use that word and I'm probably going to use it a lot more going forward, the governor changed his direction and decided that primarily the state would be the one that controls the dimmer switch and that he and his medical experts would make the calls. He's created a process that does allow counties to open, some counties, very, very limited number of counties, particularly limited in number of population, about 95% of the, the population of the state of California is not within the new path that the governor has created to allow counties to attest that they are meeting the health and safety standards that he has set forth. Those counties that are, are able to open the gates more rapidly, working with the state on a specific program. Our county, Ventura County, San Luis Obispo County is not in that tranche of counties that are, be able to move forward. But we had convened this stakeholder group and these medical professionals prior to that. We wanted them to complete that work. Frankly, it's really an extraordinary effort, bringing all these people together, having them focus on this very fine granular detail information for our community. And I think it's a really valuable document and it's going to help industries and businesses. And I think just the collaboration, everybody involved and working together under extraordinarily tight time, time tables to produce something like this is really valuable by itself. Not 100% clear how it's going to fit in going forward with the governor's process, but we want the board to adopt it. We want to include it in any documentation that we end up sending the state to make our case that we're ready to take more of the authority back to determine how we open up businesses. And I think that the governor's guidance that exists today that says only this very limited number of counties can move forward, isn't the final word on this. I fully expect that that's going to change. And as it is, we'll be in that much of a better position in the future to take advantage of any opportunity that we're given.
So it's, it's really for use within the county, if and when, at, at a time certain that the governor says, okay, this is sort of a, an implementation document for how we will move forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it has a lot of potential uses that are not defined today. And I think what we're anticipating is that the regulatory environment that we are in today may not be the same in a week or two weeks. And we want to prepare in advance to have a tool ready to either use in negotiations with the governor or to use as our own implementation guide, depending on which way the road forks.
So when it comes before the board on Tuesday, what, what is the, what is the question that the board will, will be deciding?
I think we're really frankly just going to adopt the document. We're going to, you know, put our stamp of approval on it. Originally, that was the path that the governor described, you know, have a, have a document ready to describe what you're going to do and how you would phase the reopening of businesses. We've created that. We're going to approve that by the board. He has spoken directly to that, saying that, you know, we need this, this document to be transparent, available to the public. Folks can comment on it. So people can come to the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday or zoom in and whatever they would prefer to do. They physically can't come, but they can call and, and they can participate that way. And the board ultimately approves the document and then we, if that becomes valuable to the attestation process with the governor, we'll be ready.
All right. So, you know, there's a reason I call him Prince Gavin. He, he contends to be imperial about things. Did you guys get blindsided by him switching the message on this?
Yes, absolutely. We did not expect that. We thought it was going a different direction and, and the direction changed. But I do, it is only fair to say circumstances are changing too. You know, I think that when the governor spoke earlier, you know, he thought that things were going to get better faster and they haven't statewide. It certainly has gotten better here in our county with the one notable exception, which is pretty notable. And, but in Los Angeles County, now half of the, the cases for the entire state are in Los Angeles County, 100 miles away from us. And, you know, I know we talked last time, a month ago, about the complexities of travel and that remains a significant problem that I don't hear good answers to.
And just to clarify, this document that we've been discussing is separate from a letter that the board approved and sent to the governor, asking two things, as I understand. One, take the false, or the Lompoc numbers out of the county numbers and two, to make some changes in the metrics and the measurements for, for progress. Is that correct? That's, that's different?
That is true. It is different, but actually the two documents are complementary too. The board took action in the middle of the RISE development process to very specifically ask the governor for the, those changes. But at the same time, the, the RISE document also contains recommendations that the state would make changes to some of its metrics too. So I think what you're getting is a lot of people looking at a very complex dynamic situation and saying, there are many different ways to solve this problem. It's a serious problem. It's not something that should just be glossed over and imagined that we don't have a problem and that we can just move ahead. Very serious medical people and industry people recognize, we need to do things to make sure it's safe when businesses open. But there are many different ways that you can do that and still be safe. The county has proposed an alternative to the governor's proposal that we think makes more sense for our circumstances and frankly is a better metric probably applied statewide. And I, and I really do think at some point, the governor is going to, to modify that because very simply, the standard that says you can't have a single COVID-19 death over a 14-day period, using the arbitrary boundaries of a county as the, the source of measuring that, this doesn't make sense. There are, the difference in sizes of counties alone makes it clear that doesn't make sense. Why is the same standard applied to Alpine County as Los Angeles County? There's a 15 million people differential in those two counties and to have the same standard of no death isn't really appropriate and is not a, a science-based metric.
Okay. All right. I thought one of the really interesting things about the, about the planning document, it mentioned six factors that are really local factors that shape our response. The first is obviously tourism. And it says in stage two, visitors should not spend time in Santa Barbara County and hotels should not make reservations for out-of-area visitors unless they are essential workers. However, the county is prepared and has developed tracing program with capacity to support known patterns of normal travel. So known patterns of normal travel would be, for example, somebody drives up from LA to go to the beach. And I, I am unclear still how we account for that.
I don't know that I have a good answer to that either. I don't, you know, hopefully the normal patterns of travel will assert themselves now that Los Angeles County has reopened its beaches. In fact, all of the beaches now, from Santa Barbara County south to San Diego are open. They're open in different ways. Santa Barbara County, you know, you can come to the beach, you can put a towel out, you can be on the sand. Most of the counties south of us require folks to just be doing active recreation. So there, I think there is a draw to a certain degree for people who want to come and go to the beach and on our beaches. But, you know, is that enough of a dynamic to cause a problem for us? We had our big hot weekend weather a couple of weeks ago now and we're not seeing a spike in cases that we can trace back to that event. So maybe that isn't, you know, a driver of infections. There's a lot of people looking at outdoor environments and saying it's hard to get a significant dose of the virus outdoors. It's much more difficult, say it that way. I don't know about hard, but it's, it's the dilution of the air and the wind reduces the virus load and makes it less likely. But when you're on the beach, you should still be smart. You should keep physical distancing, you know. Personally, I'd wear a mask. That's not required, but you know, there are a lot of decisions here that people need to make to protect themselves and other people. And we are asking people to continue to be diligent about these things because the better our circumstances globally in the county, for the numbers, when we make the case to the, to the governor, the better for us to have more flexibility.
All right. Then real quick, just on these other factors, the large number of college students that we have in the area. But as I understand it, everybody's going to be going online learning. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
I don't think the decisions have been made for the UC system. The CSU system has decided that for the fall that they're going to be online. I don't know if the community college has made that decision yet. Those are hard decisions and, but it seems likely there's going to be fewer students here. I would imagine just by the decision of the individual students on a risk assessment basis and their parents, it seems unlikely that things are going to go back to the way they were in January.
All right. And then the, the low immunity level, in a sense, we're victims of our own success, having social distance and self-isolated. There's just not a lot of people that have gotten it. So there are, in a funny way, more people at risk. Another factor, the mobility of the farmworker labor force. What, what, what's the response to that? How is that being dealt with?
That's a really interesting space. I was speaking with the ag commissioner last week and she described one of the things that has always been a real challenge here locally for the agricultural community is getting enough farmworkers to, to harvest crops. So they've been having folks through the federal immigration process coming into Santa Barbara County to assist in that work. And now that their production of agriculture has gone down because people, schools aren't open, hotels aren't open, restaurants aren't open to the same degree, the volume of capacity of production of agriculture has, has shrunk because there's no markets to the same degree. So the demand for farmworker labor to harvest crops that aren't going to get to market is also going down. So we've actually kind of right-sized our ag worker environment to more appropriately fit what we naturally grow here or, or what we can grow now here. So we're not importing workers from Mexico and we're having local farmworkers work locally. So that has not been as big a problem here as it might be in other places.
All right. And then of course, the penitentiary, the, the black swan event of this. I mean, it just seems to me that the Federal Bureau of Prisons is engaged in a cover-up about what's going on there. Have, have there been any improvement in the communications with the Bureau of Prisons in the county on this?
Yes. And I have to say that. And we are, you know, one of the things I've noticed is that, you know, I'm frustrated. Every other elected official from Congressman Carver Hall, Senators Feinstein and Harris are frustrated and we would like a lot more transparency from the Bureau of Prisons. We would like a much better productive working relationship with the Bureau of Prisons, but we can't let our frustration with what has happened get in the way of making progress in the future. This is an active public health crisis and we have to put everything aside and work together, as difficult as that has been and may be going forward. And this is something I have to remind myself every day. It is easy to indulge the frustration and it is important, critical, that we not do that and find a way to have a productive relationship. And that's more urgent today than it was yesterday. And there is, there are baby steps of progress toward that. We want to nurture that.
All right. And I know that Monique, the Assembly Member LeMone and Senator Jackson have been actively working on, on the governor, on getting the approval to take the Lompoc numbers out of our numbers. Who is the decision maker on that in Sacramento? Whose call is that?
It's the California Department of Public Health's call and, but the governor ultimately, you know, is involved in those conversations too. Unfortunately, we're not the only California county that has a federal prison that has a problem. But it is, you know, it, it just isn't fair. It is not fair. It's inherently unfair to hold us accountable to that standard. You know, the staff that come and go from the, the prison, that makes sense that we should be accountable to that. And that's a great place where we can collaborate with the prison authorities to better manage that system. But, you know, the inmates that are incarcerated in the facility are not a public health and safety threat to our community. They're locked in the facility. There are serious, you know, ethical, moral, human issues that are going inside the prison. And I have heard just startling information from people, mothers of inmates at the prison who have written to me asking for help and, and describing the situation that their loved ones are in, in that prison. And it makes me extremely frustrated and I wish I had tools to address that. And that is part of the dialogue with the prison, but we literally have zero authority in that space and want to have a productive relationship with the prison authorities and the places where we can have some influence and can help and can help protect our community health.
All right. Let me ask you this. The, the mayor, Kathy Mario, and her business task force have also released a plan, which they have sent to the county. Can you help me understand how the city's reopening plan aligns or does not with the county plan?
Well, the county's RISE process, our recovery reopening plan, has representation from each of the incorporated cities within that. That's part of the structure. We have all eight incorporated cities. We have an elected official representative and a staff person as, as part of that, spreading out the tentacles for creating input into the process. In addition to that, we have, I think, 25 different industry sectors, all then who convene stakeholder groups within that industry sector to get another dozen, 20 people or so to provide that input into the people that, that feed into the county's process. So the city's process is, is a part of that. And then there are versions of that at all the cities in the county that are feeding into our system. And, you know, ultimately, ideally, all of these things are integrated, but, you know, in two weeks, when we're asking folks to respond on a really short deadline, it's probably not well-coordinated at this point. But it's a living document and as we go forward, we're going to adjust and we're going to make it fit in better together and, and be more manageable from a businessperson's perspective.
All right. So just to be clear, so we have this very comprehensive county plan awaiting, you know, the go-ahead from the governor to, to move to the next stage. And then would the county have to give its okay for the city plan or would that automatically take an effect when the governor gives the okay?
Depends on how the governor actually creates the process. So there's no good answer to your question right now. I think it's a really legitimate question. What we don't want is we don't want a business operator to say, what are we, what am I supposed to do? You have three different sets of guidance that are not necessarily coordinated. Which one do I pay attention to? We're not, we don't want people to have that problem. We got to, we have to fix that when we get to that stage. But it isn't necessarily clear whether the city's document or the county's document today is going to have a role to play.
All right. And there've been some indications in the city of, you know, maybe we should go rogue, maybe we should go our own way. Councilmember Jordan made these comments the other day. There's very little going on in the city of Santa Barbara. We have a ton of capacity for medical care. If we can continue to show those numbers, why couldn't we not do more to relax our standard? This one big picture, big paintbrush for the whole county does not recognize the capability of the flexibility of our little city. Did, were you at all concerned about those remarks that, that it suggests that maybe we were going off on our own?
I've had a conversation with Councilmember Jordan and I think we have a meeting of the minds now.
That's a big yes. Okay. All right. Let me ask you about schools because that's another big hole that is sort of, you know, pops up in, in reading the report. Because everybody seems to agree that in order to quote unquote reopen the economy, the schools need to reopen as a threshold step so that parents can, can go to work. That's a huge variable. How does that fit into your thinking about how we're going to respond?
Yeah, I think you're right. And that is part of the challenge. You know, maybe I'll step back and think about this. You want, you made the point that other countries have different ways of doing this. You know, in the United States of America, we have an incredibly decentralized federal system of government that gives authority to very small, individual, local government entities. And in this instance, you know, school districts are completely separate entities, do not have interrelating authority with the city and county governments. They do have, they are a creature of the state and the state education system and the state funding system. And so I think that's where consistency is going to come, is from state guidance to local school districts about what they can and can't do. And then they will probably be on their own to implement that as they see fit in their circumstances. And we will rely on their ability to do that in order for this all to work. But with the county of Santa Barbara, isn't in a position to dictate or, or control or even influence those decisions. And it's not really appropriate, I think, for us to do that. But everybody, every level of government is wrestling with the same fundamental challenge. How can we keep people safe and reopen our economy? They are not in competition with the They are not in competition with each other, but they are, are, are complexly interrelated and require thoughtful, deep analysis. And that's exactly, as you described, what the work that the people involved in the RISE document did. And that's what school boards and all of the people involved, the teachers, the, the represented staff, every piece of all of these organizations has to work together in a new way, in a new collaborative way, in a productive way, to make this work under uncertain information that is never good enough to, to give you a, a great sense of confidence that it's time to do, you know, course A versus course B. This is something that's come home to me increasing as time has gone on, is that we're not going to get to a place where we know everything we need to know to make the next decision. We're just going to have to take the information that we have available in the moment and do the best job that we can in that moment. And ready and flexible to change in the next moment when the information changes.
Yeah, I think according to New Word, "complexly" there. That's how I, I'm going to...
I meant to say "complexly."
I'm going to save that one. No. All right. Real quick, just three other things that are kind of big unknowns that popped out at me. One, childcare. One of the working groups that childcare is essential for the workforce to come back needs to be addressed. You don't really, well, I guess you have some authority and that there are some state funds that go through the county about that. But, but, you know, how do you look at that, as a, as an issue that needs to be addressed?
Well, I actually know a lot about childcare because that was one of my, that was my previous business. So I owned and operated a childcare center for twenty years. And kids don't know how to do social distancing and physical distancing. They, they want to be together. They want to hang around with their friends. They want to be loved and hugged and nurtured, and that's really tough. And fortunately, you know, apparently, the virus is not as vicious on children, although even that is now uncertain. And so most childcare is provided through the private sector, you know, not through state licensed childcare facilities, not subsidized care. The subsidized care is critically important, and that, and we don't have enough of that as it was before. The entire industry, like, like most industries, almost virtually every industry, is suffering tremendously. How do you run a business when you don't have customers? Kids are at home with their parents. They're not at childcare facilities right now. The only childcare facilities that are operating are the ones that are serving essential workers. So it, it's, it's an incredibly difficult thing to put back together. It's like everything else that's broken. And, you know, it won't get fixed until people have confidence that their children are safe and that there's a path forward.
All right. All right, Greg. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time. We didn't even get to business liability and the restaurant capacity and small businesses. But I, I, again, I appreciate the, the work you're doing. And I know you're, you're all over the community looking in on things. And I agree that you could take the time to talk with newsmakers. And we'll, we'll check in with you again in a month or so. Thanks again.
Thank you, Jerry. And, you know, I just want to do, again, thank you. The most important responsibility I have right now is trying to communicate this very complex information to everyone in the county. And you provide a platform to do that, and I appreciate it. This is, this is complex, dense information. And as I've said multiple times in the last half hour and probably for the last three weeks, it will change. And, you know, please, folks, be patient with us. We're all doing the best job we can. Every level of government is really committed to trying to do the best work that we possibly can. And the, the response from the public to this information, to the simple requests that we're making that are, are really hard to execute on a daily basis for every individual, is inspiring to me all the time.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Stay safe.
Thanks, Jerry.